Hello, I'm J.J. Mayne Bay of Alone and More's Parade. I'm Monty Carl Barra. The acronym is AMPAC. I'm the Chief Judge, the Counselor Court. Today is Class 129, Class 129. What did we learn in Class 128? Well, one of the things we learned relatively quickly was that the United States of America's Constitution of 1789 and the United States Constitution of 1871, right, regarding what? What article did we talk about in Class 128? Well, we started talking about Article 3, Section 2, right? And because all the Moors have been taught about going to Article 3 of the Constitution of the United States of America. All the Moors have been taught to enforce the Constitution of the United States of America, right? But what we learned is that that particular article has absolutely nothing to do with Moors whatsoever, right? For what type of Moors? Moroccan Moors, right? So when Moors come back to their state, which is the Empire of Morocco, you establish your constitution for your state, now you start to invoke your constitution, right? You take a look at the United States of America Constitution, both parties have constitutions. You put the constitution down because you already have treaty relations between the two states. And the treaty relations say you use what? You use treaties to settle all disputes, right? But you don't use constitutions to settle disputes. Constitutions are only a what? A portal to get access to treaties, right? So our Moroccan states have to take the time to understand that the United States of America's Constitution has absolutely nothing to do with Moroccans, you see? Now, the United States of America's Constitution has a lot to do with subjects who are still naturalized, adopted Americans under the jurisdiction of the United States of America. But the United States of America's Constitution has nothing to do with Moroccans who have their own constitution that's been ratified, deposited, promulgated in accordance with international law, right? So that's one of the things we learned. We gotta stop talking about enforcing the Constitution. That's the wrong concept. And who else told us that's the wrong concept? Well, good brother Abdullah Il-Talib Mosse Bay, right, who's been in the game 30 years, and he turned around and told the Moors in August of 2023, he told them what? It's a misconception, we've been miseducated regarding the enforcement of the Constitution of the United States of America. Your brother Abdullah would tell you that Constitution of the United States of America has nothing to do with the Moors. The Moors have everything to do with their own states and then an enforcement of treaties. That's what we're supposed to be enforcing. Moroccan treaties, Moors treaties for the Moors Empire. That's what we're supposed to be enforcing, right? So I want to say thank you, good brother Abdullah, for all that you do. Keep up the good work. I know you're trying to teach international law on your, I think the YouTube channel is called Moroccan Post Media. So shout out to Abdullah and Shim. Keep up the good work. Though at some point, we'll connect so that way we continue to uplift fallen humanity, right? In a competent way. What else did we learn in Class 128? Well, we're starting to understand that only the truth will set us free. You know, I once heard a Moors American teacher say, "The truth don't require no apology," right? And this is what we have to understand, that the truth will set us free and we all have to take the time to let go our egos and, you know, have some humility and admit when we've been wrong, right? It's time for good brother Taj Sri Bay to come out and admit that he miseducated the people. So good brother Abdullah came out and said that what? That his growth and development was prohibited by his miseducation, right? He couldn't grow. He was stuck on a treadmill. He was stuck buffering, thinking he was Moors American, and he found out he wasn't Moors American. He found out it was not about enforcing the Constitution. It was about the Moors having their own constitution and enforcing treaties through international law. So if your brother Abdullah turned around and said that he got miseducated for 25 years, then what does that mean for the other Moors? That means that already made publications is what? A sham, right? Because it's misinformation, it's miseducation. Because if Abdullah got miseducated for 25 years, then that same information and education is on already made publications. That means that Ra's Mariah Bay also been miseducated. I mean, Kujo Il been miseducated. Jamal Bay been miseducated. Sharon been miseducated. Light Bay been miseducated. Ma'Rayo Bay been miseducated. All the Moors have been miseducated. And Abdullah's ringing their mom. We all have to take the time to hear the good brother out. He's trying to let the Moors know we was on the wrong path. We were not on the Yellow Brick Road. We've been miseducated. And now that he knows better, he's trying to do better. And he wants the same for all the other Moors. So we need to take the time to really examine and qualify the fact that we all have been miseducated as Moors Americans. Now, I'm no longer a Moors American. I got out of followership and worship, and I got into scholarship. Now, I'm standing here today as a competent Moroccan national because my Moroccan state recognizes me as being Moroccan. It's not just my verbal decree. It's by application, consent. The Moroccan state accepted me to become a national of the state. And that's what all the Moors have to do, right? So we have to learn from this. You know, the old saying is, "It's not about making a mistake." The real mistake is when you keep repeating the mistake after you know that it is a mistake that you're making. That becomes habitual, right? So the real mistake is repeating the mistake. But once you know better, you're supposed to do better. So the question is, when are the Moors Americas going to course correct? When is Taj Sri Bay gonna come out and tell the truth and say he miseducated the Moors? Taj unfortunately has assisted with the Moors' delayment of justice. And we all have to accept this and we gotta understand it. We gotta move past Taj Sri Bay and we gotta move on with the truth of international law. Let Taj just sit there and tell everybody that they're Americans. Let him have it. Keep moving. Leave him right where he is. But we all have to move forward. That must be understood. Let's get to the class. All right, as you know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. This is what the Moors should have been studying since 1945. All the other Moors on planet Earth have constitutions. All the Moors except the Moors in the West, right? Obviously, you got Moors up in Europe as well. The Moors in Europe, at some point, they'll wake up. But for right now, we're gonna talk about the Moors in the West. We should always have constitutions. Even the Sultan of Morocco turned around and did what? He enacted a constitution, 1962. So if a Sultan turned king had to enact a constitution, then what makes Moors think they don't need constitution? This is ridiculous. The problem is, we're hard-headed. That's the problem. All right, so why do we need constitutions? Okay, well, one of the main reasons why, as you see this illustration on the board, the red represents, you know, Moors who have a constitution that's been ratified, deposited, promulgated. And all the red areas, these Moroccan states now have become parties, contracting parties, to our own Moors treaties. You cannot enforce a treaty unless your state becomes a party to the treaty. So who was really enforcing the treaty? It's really what? The state. And the state turns around and recognizes offices, right? For the high contracting parties, right? For your head of state, your counsel general, Mr. Foreign Affairs, it sets up your courts, et cetera. But the state is sovereign. And the state becomes a party to the treaty. Then the state turns around and extends a limited jurisdiction, right, and a limited sovereignty to its nationals. That's the way it works. The state is sovereign. The state is immune. Because the state is a person in international law. So therefore, in all these other territories that you see is gray, if the Moors gonna establish constitutions, that means you can't get access to treaties. So in all these territories, it's great to call them non-self-governing territories or trust territories, all the gray areas mean those Moors there cannot enforce treaties. I'll say it again. If you still live in a gray area on this map, you cannot enforce treaties. That's the truth. You gotta study international law. Only states can be parties to treaties. We gotta understand these Moors. So that's the reason why we all need constitutions, right? That's the main reason why. It's only a way to get access to treaties. Let's move on. Okay, so when we're talking about the International Court of Justice, right? And one of the things we have to understand about the International Court of Justice is there to be arbitrators, right? To settle contentious disputes. It acts as somewhat like a world court, right? To settle contentious disputes amongst states. Well, which states? Well, you got member states of the United Nations Charter, and then you got non-member states, right? So non-member states can also utilize the services of the ICJ, right? So as a recap, we're gonna have Article 92 again, and then we're starting going over some more information about the ICJ. Okay, Article 92.
Article 92. The International Court of Justice shall be the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. It shall function in accordance with the Annex Statute, which is based upon the statute of the Permanent Court of International Justice and forms an integral part of the present charter.
All right, thank you very much. So Article 92 lets you know that the ICJ is the principal, right, judicial organ of the United Nations. It gets to oversee all disputes from a world court perspective, right? But it says also, "is based upon the statute of the Permanent Court of International Justice." So what about the statute? Well, when you go to the statutes, right, and start understanding the statutes of the ICJ, one of the articles is this, right? Let's take it to the board. Right, what do we have here? We got the Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 14, Articles 92 through 96. It's about what? The International Court of Justice, right? Drop-down box. So they mention the statute, right? The statutes of the International Court of Justice, okay? Now, we take a look at Article 34, Section 1. What does it say? It says, "Only states may be parties in cases before the court," right? I'll say it again. Article 34, Section 1 of the statute, right? The statute, the statute of the court, right? Article 34, Section 1 says, "Only states may be parties in cases before the court," right? Why is that important to know? Okay, let's go back. Let's go backwards. Go backwards. Okay. All these gray areas you see up here on this illustration, these are what you call non-self-governing territories. I mean, all the Moors in these territories are states. Every last one of them. Why? Because they're in the absence of what? A constitution. It's the constitution that sets up the opportunity for you to have a state. Now, yes, do we recognize the Empire of Morocco? Does the Empire of Morocco have a constitution? No, right? We're building up to get to that stage, right? But what we do, we bring all the Moroccan states, right? The provincial Moroccan states within the Greater Empire of Morocco, such as these Moroccan states in red, we start to come together and then we recognize the Empire of Morocco because the Empire of Morocco is recognizing us. So we'll get there when we establish a constitution for the Empire of Morocco, right? But in the meantime, it only states can be parties in the ICJ. That means that none of these areas in gray, what these Moors are, can be parties in front of the ICJ if they actually want to petition the ICJ. So therefore, if they're stateless, that means they can't use a world court. Not only can they not use the ICJ, they can't even use counsel of court. Because counsel of court has to be set up by what? Well, counsel of court is recognized where? In the treaty. The only way to get access to the treaty, you have to be a state to become a party to said treaty. Then you can activate counsel of court. You see how far away the Moors are away from being able to enforce their own rights through counsel of court? So if you're stateless and you in this gray area, not only can you not appear in front of the ICJ, you can't even become party to any of your treaties. That must be understood. This is why it's so important for Moors to establish constitutions that now outline your state, right? Okay, all right. Speaking of the ICJ, here are the current members, all right? Let's just go over a brief, all right? So right now, the president of the ICJ is Judge Donahue, right? So you got 15 judges, okay? So we'll just go through it quickly. You got the judge for the United States of America. You got the Russian Federation judge, okay? You got a judge for Slovakia. You got a judge for France, okay? You got a judge for Morocco, King Morocco, Somalia, okay? You got judges for China, Uganda. You got judges for India, Jamaica, Lebanon, Japan, Germany, Austria, Australia, and Brazil. You see, it's 15 judges. Now, somebody might ask the question, "Uh, J.B., can you go back up to where it said Morocco?" Okay, let me scroll back up because this may be a question that Moors may have, right? Let's go back up to Morocco. So this particular judge, right? Judge Mohammed Banalim is the judge that was voted in from the Kingdom of Morocco, right? So let's say the Moors have to go to the ICJ, right? We have a contentious dispute with the United States of America and we want to bring our dispute to the ICJ, right? Our counsel courts are being ignored, our counsel court orders, right? Judgments and opinions are being ignored. So it appears as though the counsel court is not prevailing. So now we gotta petition the ICJ. And they say, "Okay, well, when you petition the ICJ, you can have a judge there that represents your nationality." So the Moors get there and say, "Yeah, we're Moroccans." They say, "Okay, well, we already have a Moroccan judge." They say, "Well, wait, timeout. Wait, wait, timeout." You're saying it's the Moroccan judge? And the answer is, "Yes." But a judge for who? Kingdom of Morocco, right? Now, this is, what I'm getting ready to say now will become a potential question that we have to deal with. This is, this is coming up, right? Soon, right? In 24 months or less, this question is gonna have to be asked. Is this Moroccan judge representing Moors? That's the question. Does this Moroccan judge represent the Empire of Morocco? That's the question. And the answer is, "No." Why? Because this particular judge right here, and I have nothing against this judge. All judges should be respected. It has nothing to do with him. We're talking about the political status of Morocco. Because you gotta remember, he's just sitting in a chair, right? He got elected in, and once he leaves that chair, someone else will sit in that chair, right? It's not about this good brother, this judge right here. It's about this political status of this word called Morocco. Well, first of all, they shouldn't say King Morocco, but they got the short title in there. But you gotta be careful when you use this short title because that short title represents what? The empire. When you say Morocco, that's empire. When you say King Morocco, that's provincial Moroccan state, right? That's a small, Woody-Pocatay juris-territory, right? But when you say Morocco, that represents empire according to what? Treaties. So any judge who's there that represents Morocco is really representing King Morocco according to the King Morocco's what? Constitution, right? Keep in mind, the King Morocco's constitution does not recognize the empire. The King Morocco's constitution does not recognize the office of Sultan. They waived their rights to recognize the empire. Okay, so when the Moors show up at the ICJ and say, "Yeah, we hear based upon the empire, and our nationality is Moroccan." Well, wait. Well, he's Moroccan. We're Moroccan. Does he get to represent us? Well, tell you the truth, I would say no. That's my opinion until we ask the question. But let me validate it a little bit, right? Let's start getting a little bit of review. How do we get into a little bit of review? Okay, like I just said. The King Morocco's constitution don't recognize the empire. So how can he represent Moors of an empire when he, as a judge, comes from a territory that don't recognize the empire? Which means he can't recognize the representation of Moors. What's another reason why? Okay, let's go to Etymology Dictionary. If I type in the word Morocco, right, Morocco. I hit enter. When Morocco comes up, okay, we're gonna read the definition of Morocco in the Etymology Dictionary. Etymology is for the origin of verbs, right? Okay, from the top.
Morocco. Country in northwest Africa. From Italian, from Berber, Marrakech. Properly the name of the city of Marrakech. From Arabic, Maghrib, Al-Aqas?
Qatar.
Aqua. Extreme west. Compare French, Maroc. German, Morocco. In English, the first vowel has been altered, apparently by influence of Moor. Related, Moroccan.
All right, so Morocco is about what? It's about northwest Africa, so it's about Africans, right? It talked about Berbers. Berbers are Moors, right? Berbers, Marrakech, right? So then it comes down here and says, "Moor." "Moor." So the Moors, Morocco, right, and Moor, right? You got Morocco, right? Moroccan, right? Moor, right? Moors, right? See how that flows, symmetry? So you got Morocco and Moor, which are also what? Moroccan. You see that? Moroccan. So Moroccan, Morocco, Moor, right? See how they put in the hyperlink? Okay, so are you saying that this gentleman is a Moor? Is he a Moor? That's the question. Because when we go to the ICJ, we're going as what? Moors, right? Okay, so then we go back to the definition of Morocco, right? Definition of Morocco. Now we click on the hyperlink of Moor. We're gonna click on it. All right, so Moor. Now we come down to the proper noun, capital N. Now we look up this definition, Etymology Dictionary, okay? All right, from the top.
Moor is a noun. North African Berber, one of the race dwelling in Barbary, late 14th century. From Old French, Moor. From medieval Latin, Morris. From Latin, Marus. Inhabitant of Mauritania. Roman northwest Africa. A region now comprising to northern Algeria and Morocco. From Greek, Marus. Perhaps a native name or else cognate with Marus, black. But this adjective only appears in late Greek and may as well be from the people's name as the reverse. Also applied to the Arabic conquerors of Spain. Being a dark people in relation to Europeans. Their name is the middle, the name in the Middle Ages was a synonym for negro. Later, 16th century to 17th century. Being the nearest Muslims to western Europe. It was used indiscriminately of Muslims, Persians, Arabs, et cetera. But especially those in India. Cognate with Dutch Moor. German Moor. Danish Marer. Spanish Moro. Italian Moro. Related are Morris.
Okay, so from the top. We're getting down to something, right? We're talking description, right? So it says Moor now. North African, Berber, right? Let's increase that. North African, Berber. Who are the Berbers? The Moors. Although that's a derogatory term, the Berbers are Moors, right? One of the race dwelling in Barbary. The Barbary treaties, which is Moors. Late 14th century? Why are you talking about 14th century? You're talking about what? The Moors when they fell, right? They fell in what? 1492, right? From Old French, Moor. From medieval Latin, Morris. From Latin, Morris. Inhabitant of Mauritania. Roman northwest Africa. A region now corresponded to northern Algeria and Morocco. From Greek, Morris. Perhaps a native name or else cognative with Marus, black, quote-unquote. But this adjective only appears in late Greek and may as well from the people's name as the reverse. Well, wait, what does that mean? What does that mean? It's maybe, it's black, right? We're talking Moor. See, they're just tying the word "black" into word "Moor," right? So Farrakhan should listen up. Listen up Farrakhan. What you already know is, but maybe your people, sending in your pews will listen to this. If I say the name Farrakhan, then they'll listen up, right? So watch this. So I'm talking to Farrakhan's followers, right? So if you call yourself black, Etymology Dictionary says, "You should read this in reverse." It says right here, "Black," first of all, is an adjective. It's not a noun. A noun is a person, place, or thing. An adjective describes something or someone, right? It's a description. It's not a nationality. It's not an identity. It's a caste system to say, "Your complexion may be dark." But the question is, who are you from a nationality perspective? So right here, in Etymology Dictionary, it says, "First of all, black is an adjective, not a noun." Then it says something about the people's name as the reverse. You see that? Oh, reverse. Oh, let me see. All right, oh, so you mean black a Moor. Black a Moor. You see how I'm reading it backwards? Black a Moor. The blacks are Moors. Black a Moor. See, they tell you to read it reverse, right? So to Farrakhan's followers, all those so-called black people are actually Moors. You see that? They're actually who? Moors. See that? Noun. Black is what? See what black says? Black, adjective. This is all Farrakhan gotta do, show his people. The black man ain't black. Ain't no black man. He's Moroccan. That's the nationality, i.e. Moor. Moor is a what? Abbreviation for Moroccan, even though they still consider the word Moor a noun in itself. You see, it can stand on its own two feet, it's substantive law. And law, Moor can stand up all by itself because of the noun is mentioned what? In treaties, as a name of a people. You see, now, what else? Let's go to the second paragraph. We're talking about the ICJ, right? Keep in mind, we're talking about the ICJ judges. The Morocco judge. Okay, it says, "Also applied to the Arabic conquerors of Spain," right? Let me increase it. "Also applied to the Arabic conquerors of Spain. Being a dark people in relation to Europeans." Let's just pause right there. "Being a dark people in relation to Europeans." Let's just pause right there. So the Moors are dark people. So the Moors are dark people. The Moors are also considered to be what? Negroes. You see that? You see that? So the dark people, the dark people, they call them negroes. They also call them what? They call them what? Black. So the negro and the black are what? Moors. You see that? This is Etymology Dictionary. Farrakhan should just look this up and show all the people that follow him, that they're not black people. No black man is Moroccan. That's the nationality. Black is an adjective for all these smart people that graduated from the HBCUs. Look up black. It's an adjective. It's not a noun. This is, people got degrees. They got masters. They got PhDs. They're proud black people. And black is an adjective. But Etymology Dictionary will tell you that black means black in reverse, black a Moor, right? But you're supposed to drop the "black" because the "black" is an adjective. It's describing what? A Moor. The "black" is description of Moor. That's a part of speech. Noun, adjective. It's too easy. What's my point? Let's get back to it. Moors are being a dark people. Okay, let's go back to our good brother. No disrespect, no disrespect. We just gotta, we gotta make sense of this. When the Moors show up and the ICJ say, "Oh, we got good news for you. We already have a Moroccan judge to represent your nationality." And you say, "Well, who is it? And this good brother, he's a good brother. You gotta respect him. He's a judge. Give him high honors." This ain't about him. This is about this word right here, Morocco. Morocco's an empire. It should say Kingdom of Morocco. Because if it said Kingdom of Morocco, we wouldn't even have this conversation. But if they're just simply gonna put Morocco on there, now we gotta have this conversation because Morocco's the empire, not the kingdom. So we need a judge that it represents what? The Empire of Morocco. That's a Moor, and Moors are dark people according to Etymology Dictionary. Plus, is he wearing a fez? There's no fez. Moors wear fezzes and turbans. There's no fez, no turban. That's not proper representation of Moors, you see? And this is gonna become a real question in the future. Does any judge who sits there that's claiming to ascend the seat to represent Morocco, which is really King Morocco, do they represent M-O-R, Moors? That's the question. So you got all these Moors gonna show up in fezzes and turbans and they comfort people and this good brother is our representative at the ICJ? That's nothing against him because guess what? He's supposed to leave his nationality at the house. He's supposed to be neutral when he gets there, right? He's only looking at the law. Only thing he sees is the law. Only thing he hears is the law. He's gonna do what? He's gonna make a ruling based upon the law. But in international law, they say, "If and if you want a judge to represent your nationality..." But in international law, they say if and fact, you, you want a judge to represent your nationality at the ICJ, and you don't see a judge that has got your nationality, you can have what's called an ad hoc, right? An ad hoc judge to sit on the panel with the other judges, because that judge represents more than likely the interest of your nationality, even though that judge, even though he's ad hoc, he's not supposed to recognize his nationality while he's sitting there. But yet you're entitled to have a judge up there that represents your nationality. Where the Moors nationality is what? We're Moroccans, but abbreviation of more, because more recognize in our treaty the word more. It's about the what? Moorish government. Our treaties say that the Moorish government has a sovereign authority. So the Moors are, are copper colored people. So I'm spending a little time on this because this ain't got nothing to do with this good brother, this judge right here, he should be honored, right? He should be respected, but now he, he's unfortunate to get caught up in all this, right? There's no, this is not his fault. Right? So, so i- 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 in my opinion, I mean, I don't, I don't even know if he's Arab. He doesn't look Arab, he might be Arab, but he doesn't look Arab to me, so I, I, this is, this is, this is, you know, this is questionable here, I just, you gotta understand what's happening here. You have to also know the history. France had a lot of Frenchmen living in the territory of the Empire Morocco. France always had Frenchmen trying to represent the Empire Morocco. Remember that France controlled the empire from nineteen twelve to nineteen fifty-six, a bunch of Frenchmen, right? So now you look up and you, you got this good brother, his name is Judge Mohammed Benona, right? Benona. And he's the judge from Morocco. I, I, for, for King of Morocco, I got no problem with that, you gotta be respected. But when we get there, a bunch of feds will show up, where's our judge? In our opinion, he doesn't qualify, and that's no disrespect to him, that's no, not a negative on him, but we talking politics right now. This is not racism, this is politics. Who represents our political interest as Moors? That's the question. Let's move on. Alright, so speaking of the ICJ, the ICJ have a handbook, right? A little bit of their history is in this handbook, Moors can look this up online, okay? International Court of Justice handbook, let, let's learn a little bit about it, right? Just look, look at a little bit of history, since they take the time to put together a handbook. Gives you a little bit of brief about, about the ICJ. Alright, so let's, let's, let's start from the top, forward.
Forward, the role of the International Court of Justice, ICJ, which has its seat in the Hague of the Netherlands, is to settle in accordance with the international law disputes submitted to it by states. In addition, certain international organs and agencies are entitled to call upon it for advisory opinions. Also known as the World Court, in parentheses. The ICJ is the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. It was set up in nine, of June of nineteen forty-five, under the Charter of the United Nations, and began its activities in April of nineteen forty-six. The ICJ is the highest court in the world and the only one with both general and universal jurisdiction. It is open to all member states of the United Nations and subject to the provisions of its statute, may entertain any questions of international law. The ICJ should not be confused with the other mostly criminal international judicial institutions based in the Hague, which were established much more recently. For example, the International Criminal Tribunal for the Former Yugoslavia ICTY, an ad hoc, ad hoc court created by the Security Council, and which operated from nineteen ninety-three to two thousand seventeen. Or the International Criminal Court, the ICC, the first permanent international criminal court established by treaty, which does not belong to the United Nations system. These criminal courts and tribunals have limited jurisdiction and may only try individuals for acts constituting international crimes, genocide, crimes against humanity, and war crimes. The purpose of the present handbook is to provide without excessive detail the basis for a better practical understanding of the facts concerning the history, composition, jurisdiction, procedure, and decisions of the International Court of Justice. In no way does it commit the court, nor does it provide, provide any interpretation of the court's decisions, the actual text of which alone are authoritative. This handbook was first published in nineteen seventy-six, with a second edition in nineteen seventy-nine, a third in nineteen eighty-six, a fourth in nineteen ninety-six, on the occasion of the fiftieth anniversary of the court's inaugural sitting, a fifth in two thousand four and a sixth in two thousand fourteen. The handbook does not constitute an official publication of the court and has been prepared by the registry, which is alone responsible for its content. The International Court of Justice is to be distinguished from its predecessor, the Permanent Court of International Justice, which was between nineteen twenty-two and nineteen forty-six. See below, um, paragraph twelve through fifteen. To avoid confusion, the references to cases decided by the two courts and asterisk has been placed before the names of cases decided by the Permanent Court of International Justice. The abbreviations is the ICJ and PCIJ are used respectively to designate the two courts. For statistical purposes, cases which were entered into the court's general list prior to the adoption of the seventeen eighty-seven, or I'm sorry, nineteen seventy-eight Rules of Court, see below page seventeen, are included even when the application recognized that the opposing party declined to accept the jurisdiction of the court. Since the adoption of the seven, uh, nineteen seventy-eight Rules of Court, such applications are no longer considered as ordinary applications and are no longer entered in the general list. They are therefore disregarded in the statistics unless the state against which the application was made consented to the court's jurisdiction in the case.
Pause, okay, let's, let's, okay, talk about, um, the rules of court, right? So you got statutes of the court, and then you got rules of the court, right? So if you're talking statutes of the court, now you have to look up what? The statutes of the International Court of Justice, that's a separate instrument, right? So you have the charter, then you got the statutes of the International Court of Justice. Alright, so when they say statute, this is what they refer to, right? Then you come over and they say they mentioned the rules, okay? Now you have the rules of court that was established in nineteen seventy-eight, okay? It says the court, having regard to, uh, chapter fourteen of the Charter of the United Nations, having regard to the statute of the court, annex there to, acting in pursuance of article thirty of the statute, adopt the following rules, right? So you got statutes, and you also have rules, right? So Moors, go back and, and, and take a look at that, we won't read it at this time, but it's, but it's good read, you should go back and check it out, we won't read it at this time, maybe another day, alright? But I wanted to show you, uh, how they're utilizing these words, rules, and then going back, they're talking statute, and then obviously, uh, they'll continue to talk about, uh, the, the charter itself, right? The charter itself, right? So that's three separate documents, you see? That's what Moors gotta understand, alright, just a moment, let's start the word since.
Since the adoption of the nine, or the nineteen seventy-eight Rules of Court, such applications are no longer considered as ordinary applications and are no longer entered in the general list. They are therefore disregarded in the statistics unless the state against which the application was made consented to the court's jurisdiction in the case. The information contained in this handbook was last updated on the thirty-first of December of two thousand eighteen. The regions into which the states of the globe are divided in this handbook correspond to the regional groupings in the General Assembly of the United Nations. For all information concerning the court, please contact the registrar of the International Court of Justice, Peace Palace, twenty-five seventeen KJ, the Hague, Netherlands, with that phone number and information at the ICJ.
Alright, so, uh, they got a table contents, let, let's go to table contents. Okay, I'm listening.
So we have the foreword on page five, history on page nine, the judges as the registry on page twenty-one, the parties on page twenty-one, um.
Pardon thirty.
Uh, the judges and the registry are on twenty-one, the parties are on thirty-three. Proceedings on page forty-nine, the decision on page sixty-nine, advisory opinions on page eighty-one, and then international law begins on page ninety-five. Cases brought before the court begins on one oh nine, as well as contentious cases on one oh nine. Advisory cases begins on page two fifty-six. Annexes begins on page two eighty-one, and the short bibliography begins on page three eleven. And the index begins on page three hundred and fifteen.
Alright, okay, let's read a little bit about the history, alright?
Okay, one, the history. The creation of the court represented the culmination of a long development of methods for the Pacific settlement of international disputes, the origins of which can be said to go back to classical times. Article thirty-three of the United Nations Charter lists the following methods for the Pacific settlement of disputes between states. Negotiation, inquiry, mediation, conciliation, arbitration, judicial settlement, and resort to regional agencies or arrangements, to which good offices should be also added. Among these methods, certain involve appealing to third parties. For example, mediation places the parties to a dispute in a position in which they can themselves resolve their dispute thanks to the intervention of a third party. Arbitration goes further in the sense that the dispute is in fact submitted to the decision, submitted to the decision or award of an impartial third party, so that a binding settlement can be achieved. The same is true of judicial settlements, except that a court is subject to stricter rules than an arbitral tribunal in procedural matters. For example, historically speaking, mediation and arbitration preceding judicial settlement. The former was known, for example, in ancient India, whilst numerous examples of the latter are to be found in ancient Greece, in China, among the Arabian tribes, in the early Islamic world, in maritime customary law in medieval Europe, and in papal practice. The modern history of international arbitration is however generally recognized as dating from the so-called Jay Treaty in seventeen ninety-four between the United States of America and Great Britain. This treaty of amity, commerce, and navigation provided for the creation of three mixed commissions, composed of American and British nationals in equal numbers, who were tasked with settling a number of outstanding questions between the two countries, which it had not been possible to resolve by negotiation. While it is true that these mixed commissions were not strictly speaking organs of third-party adjudication, they were intended to function the, to some extent as tribunals. They reawakened interest in the process of arbitration. Throughout the nineteenth century, the United States and the United Kingdom had recourse to them, as did other states in Europe and the Americas. The Alabama Claims Arbitration in eighteen seventy-two between the United Kingdom and the United States marked the start of a second and still more decisive phase in the development of international arbitration. Under the Treaty of Washington of eighteen seventy-one, the United States and the United Kingdom agreed to submit to arbitration claims by the former for alleged breaches of neutrality by the latter during the American Civil War. The two countries set out certain rules governing the duties of neutral governments that were to be applied by the tribunal, which they agreed should consist of five members to be appointed respectively by the heads of state of the United States, the United Kingdom, Brazil, Italy, and Switzerland. The last three states were not being parties to the case. The award of the arbitral tribunal ordered the United Kingdom to pay compensation, and the latter duly complied. The proceeding served as a demonstration of the effectiveness of arbitration in the settlement of a major dispute, and it led during the latter years of the nineteenth century to developments in various directions, namely.
Pause. Okay, so what did we just learn in reading those several, uh, uh, paragraphs about the United States of America? Well, they've been dealing with mediation, arbitration, right? Conciliation, judicial settlement for a couple hundred years, right? So they are grand masters at understanding a step-by-step process to settle disputes. You see, so we as Moors, we, we got a long way to go to keep studying this, right? The United States of America's grand masters at this game, right? But at the same time, you gotta understand, when we start to enforce our, our state rights, our treaty rights through counsel court, even though our counsel court may not initially prevail, right? And, and let's say today, being in December twenty twenty-three, but the United States already knows there's different levels to this game. They know that arbitrators gonna come in, such as the General Assembly's gonna come in, they might send in the C twenty-four who deals with, uh, deconversation, right? These are mediators and arbitrators coming in. You got not only the General Assembly, it's all those voters of a hundred ninety-three states, but you also have the Security Council. But they know ultimately all this gonna end up at the International Court of Justice. And they don't want these cases to end up at ICJ, why? Because when it ends up at the ICJ, guess what? The ICJ makes everything public, so when the media gets access to everything that the Moors are doing now at the United Nations, and especially at the ICJ, because the ICJ has its own press. You see, the United Nations got their own press, so once the press gets access to the fact that Moors are making a conflict claim at the United Nations, then, then the game is over, but what's my point? The United Nations, um, excuse me, the United States of America, uh, who is being represented at this time by the United States, uh, knows very well that it's not gonna create a stopgap right here locally, right? Because they say all politics is local, so right here within the region, over here what they commonly call America, right? Which is Amer- America's located where? In Morocco, Empire Morocco. So they already know it's not gonna stop here locally, just at Alabama, the Moors ain't gonna stop there. The Mo- the Moors who established the state in Alabama, now they're ready to take it to the next level, right? They're seeking mediation, there gonna be arbitration, there gonna be what? Judicial settlement through the counsel court, after counsel court, it's gonna go straight to the UN to deal with the General Assembly, Security Council, and then their special committees such as the C twenty-four, and from there, it's gonna go where? To the ICJ. So the United States knows they can stall, deny, defend, all they want, but they already know ultimately where this is gonna end up. So, so what is their, their tactics in dealing with all this? Is to try to slow it down and control the tempo. Because they already know what the ultimate outcome is gonna be, because they already know they're parties to these treaties. They were there when all the treaties were written. They know beyond a reasonable doubt the Moors will win one hundred out of one hundred times at the ICJ. Because the United States of America was there when all the treaties were being drafted. They were what you call a negotiating state, they negotiated the terms, conditions of the treaties. They're the ones who got recognized by the Empire Morocco, then they turn around and like matter and recognize the Empire Morocco themselves. As what? The sovereign independent states. The United States of America was there when they was drafting all the treaties regarding Moors and Moors subjects and the Moorish government, and the confident counsel court just ran by who? Moors. They were there during the negotiations when these treaties were being put together. The United States of America and the United States, which is the representative, already know they'll lose one hundred out of one hundred times at the ICJ. Now, while we're going to ICJ, I just wanted to say that, right? So while we're reading this, notice they're talking about the United States of America. Right, they're talking about how they, how they learn, how to do mediation, arbitration, and then seeking tribunal settlement, right? Okay, let's continue.
A sharp growth in the practice of inserting clauses in treaties provided for recourse to arbitration in the event of a dispute between the parties.
Pause, so right here, this is one of their quotes in points. The United States of America understands what? A sharp growth in the practice of inserting clauses in treaties providing for recourse to arbitration in the event of dispute between the parties. What did the United States of America make sure was in the treaties? Counselor court, you see? What else they make sure it was in the treaties? There was always some provision there about who? Moors. If you look at all the treaties, every last one of the treaties talking about- If you look at all the treaties, every last one of the treaties talking about Moors. So the United States of America always wanted to know, how do we deal with this mediation and arbitration and judicial settlement and dealing with Moors and Empire Morocco? So this first voting point says, a sharp growth in the practice of inserting clauses in treaties providing for recourse to arbitration, which would be the court. In this, in this example they're using, right, so arbitration would be some type of third party coming in to sell it before it gets to litigation. Or either court comes in as the arbitrator to do what? Sell it, basically on adjudication. So it's two parts to arbitration. Sometime you have arbitrators come in and look to settle it, right? Before it goes to litigation. And then you got arbitrators that come in, which is simply just the judges. And they're looking for what? Adjudication. Right, it's two types of arbitration, right, depending on which stage you go to. Some contracts, you read some contracts that say, you must seek arbitration before adjudication. Some contracts don't have that disclaimer in there. That means you have a dispute, you go straight to the court for arbitration, you see? Two types of arbitration. All right, this second voting point, okay?
The conclusion of general arbitration treaties for the settlement of specified classes of interstate disputes.
Pause. Okay, so what do they mean, the conclusion of general arbitration treaties for the settlement of specified classes of interstate dispute? What's an interstate dispute? That means it's right there regional, right? Okay, watch this. See the map? That's called interstate, okay? So this will be interstate disputes, such as AMPAK as an example. AMPAK would be considered an interstate dispute if we have an issue with the state of Colorado, which is a charter. So therefore, who would have to come in and represent the state of Colorado? Well, that would be the United States Federal Corporation on behalf of the United States of America. Because AMPAK is a contracting party to the Moors treaties. But the state of Colorado is not a contracting party to the treaties. So the state of Colorado would have to go and petition the United States Federal Corporation to then come in and represent the United States of America and the state of Colorado in dealing with a dispute with AMPAK. So that's an interstate dispute, right? It's staying local, you see, interstate. But if we have to go to ICJ, it becomes what? International. It becomes external, right? It becomes external when you take it to a world court. It's an inter- interstate dispute when we keep it simply regional. Or we keep it right here within our own state. And this is what Moors gotta understand. We gotta fill this here with all red, why? Because it's like playing one-on-one. You gotta, you gotta stick your man. You gotta play defense on your man. The Moors in this Moroccan state right here, it was this Dinty, right? Dinty, right here, their job is to keep Texas in check. AMPAK's job is to keep Colorado in check. You see, you got New Mexico right here, their job is to keep Oregon in check. You got AMPAK right here, their job is to keep Georgia in check, right? You got Syracuse right here, their job is to keep North Carolina in check, right? You got, uh, uh, AMPAM, their job is to keep, uh, Michigan in check. Excuse me, you got Indiana, Indiana. So you got Maroon State government, their job is to keep Indiana in check, and you got, uh, uh, um, AMPAM, AMPAM's job is to keep Michigan in check. And we gotta fill up this whole territory, so each of the territories is keeping the Americans in check. And when I say Americans, who am I really talking about? The government, the juridical person coming on this, for this example, state of Colorado is a juridical person, right? It's an official person. Now, state of Colorado gotta keep the governor in check, the attorney general in check, the legislators in check, right? All those people, the whole offices, that's what we're dealing with. The Americans, which is the regular citizens, they don't write nothing. It's only people who got a pen in their hand. So the Moors have a pen in their hand, and the state of Colorado have a pen in their hand, and our job is to keep them in check, because we have the sovereign authority, you see? The state of Colorado has to understand that the principles of Moroccan law is binding on them, and that's all the Moors' job. So when we all come together, now we all can deal with the United States and the United States of America as a collective, or we just simply stick with our interstate dispute. Okay? Number three.
Efforts to, efforts to construct a general law of arbitration so the, so that countries wishing to have recourse to this means of settling disputes would not be obliged to agree each time on the procedure to be adopted. The com- composition of the tribunal, the rules to be followed, and the factors to be taken into consideration in rendering the award.
You see, so all courts have statutes and rules, all courts. Even the Moors Counselor Court will have statutes of the court and rules of the court. That way, both parties will understand what to expect, what, what, what rules does the court have to abide to? What statutes does the counsel court have to adhere to? Right, so both parties have a right to understand what are the rules of engagement, you see? That must be understood. All right, but what's my point? So the United States of America knows this. They're talking about the United States of America learning. Right, they're talking democracy over here. They're talking about how do, how do, how do two foreign states settle a dispute? The United States is well-trained in this, and this is what Moors gotta learn. We gotta play catch-up. Right? Okay, let's continue.
The proposal for, proposals for the creation of a permanent international arbitral tribunal order to obviate the need to set up a special ad hoc tribunal to decide each dispute.
Right, so as you can see this last, it says, proposals for the creation of a permanent international arbitral tribunal in order to obviate the need to set up a special ad hoc tribunal to decide each dispute. So you see, they didn't have a permanent, right? It says, proposal for the creation of a permanent international arbitration. Right, so it was talking about put together one, right? Or they had what? An ad hoc. That means if you need to put together a court real quick, they could just appoint five judges, say, let's come together, put together a quick tribunal, deal with an international dispute. So the United States of America was learning this back in the day. They was testing things, you see? All right, so then later on, you know, this permanent Court of Arbitration was founded in eighteen ninety-nine, but it really didn't get off the ground because they wasn't able to appoint judges to European states, and the world wouldn't get together to pick uh, the right judges for the court. Nobody respected each other's judges. So they said, okay, let's trash this. Okay, so they moved on. They moved on. All right, so let's get to this next part of the history, okay? All right, from the top.
Okay. The ICJ is the principal judicial organ of the United Nations. The outbreak of war in September of nineteen thirty-nine inevitably had serious consequences for the PCIJ, which had already for some years been experiencing a period of diminished activity. After its last public sitting on the fourth of December of nineteen thirty-nine, the PCIJ did not deal with any judicial business, and no further judicial elections were held. In nineteen forty, the court removed to Geneva. A single judge remained at the Hague, together with a few registry officials of Dutch nationality.
Pause. Okay, so what's happening here? What's the PCIJ? That's the Permanent Court of International Justice. Who set that up? That was the League of Nations. The League of Nations was established in nineteen twenty. Who established the League of Nations? France. France had the granting powers because they had signed a bilateral treaty with the Sultan, right? Called the Treaty of Théssen nineteen twelve. And the Sultan gave France the powers to put in what? A new regime of courts, right, to control the natural administration of Planet Earth, right, to control the Empire Morocco, right? So, right here says, the outbreak of war in September nineteen thirty-nine inevitably had serious consequences for the PCIJ. Why did it have serious consequences for that judge, I mean, for that, for that meeting? Because it located where? In France. And France was that where? Who? Germany. And that's why the judges couldn't, uh, uh, meet anymore, right? So you have to understand the history here, okay? So this eventually had to establish another court. All right, they're gonna talk about the history, okay? All right, let's continue.
The uphill, uphills of war led to renewed thought about the future of the court and the creation of a new international legal order. In nineteen forty-two, the United States Secretary of State and the Foreign Secretary of the United Kingdom declared themselves in favor of the establishment or re-establishment of an international court after the war. And the Inter-American Juridical Committee recommended the extension of the PCIJ's jurisdiction. Early in nineteen forty-three, the British government took the initiative of inviting a number of experts to London to constitute an informal inter-allied committee to examine the matter. This committee, under the chairmanship of Sir William Malkin, United Kingdom, held nineteen meetings, which were attended by jurors from eleven countries. In its report, which was published on the tenth of February of nineteen forty-four, it recommended the following.
Okay, pause. So what happened? Let's, let's look at this history. So right here, it talks about trying to put together, right, basically, United Nations. So it says nineteen forty-two, the United States Secretary of State and the Foreign Secretary of the United Kingdom. So you have the United States and Great Britain coming together, right? Because they know that Germany had done what? Germany had annexed France, so France was fighting Germany. Right, we're talking World War, what? Two. Okay, so, so France got annexed, meaning Germany had already taken over France, but France was fighting back, and it finally re-emerging, right? They were re-emerging as a new republic of France. They've been on like their third or fourth republic, right? They dealt with Coup d'Etat and all kind of stuff. But after Germany, they started beating Germany, and Germany was leaving. Now, now the United States and Great Britain is finally talking to France. Okay, so let's start from here. In nineteen forty-two, the United States Secretary of State and the Foreign Secretary of the United Kingdom declared themselves in favor of establishment or re-establishment of an international court after the war. And the Inter-American Juridical Committee recommended extension of the PCIJ's jurisdiction. Early in nineteen forty-three, the British government took an initiative of inviting a number of experts to London to constitute an informal inter-allied committee to examine, examine the matter. This committee, under chairman of Sir William Malkin, United Kingdom, held nineteen meetings, which were attended by the jurors from eleven countries. In his report, which was published on tenth February nineteen forty-four, it recommended, right? So, what about this? This is very interesting. Right, so they're working still with France. Right, they, they wanna work with France because they know France has what? The pen. They knew they could not establish a court in the Empire Morocco without France's involvement. You see, even though the, the convention, or should I say, the covenant on the League of Nations established in nineteen twenty by France, because they had a mandate from the Sultan. Now they wanna establish what? The United Nations. But they couldn't do it without France. Now, the United States of America didn't wanna have nothing to do with France, why not? Because they knew France had the pen. The United States of America wanted to be the top dog. They wanted to take that power away from France. So they still had to get up ultimately meeting with France, because France had the granting powers to establish a new regime for a world court. Because France are responsible for courts. We'll talk about that in a little while, okay? Okay, let's continue.
Okay, so the tenth of February of nineteen forty-four, it recommended that the statute of any new international court created should be based on that of the PCIJ. That advisory jurisdiction should be retained in the case of the new court. That acceptance of the jurisdiction of the new court should not be compulsory. That the court should have no jurisdiction to deal with essentially political matters. Meanwhile, on the thirtieth of October of nineteen forty-three, following a conference between China, the USSR, the United Kingdom, and the United States, a joint declaration was issued recognizing the necessity of, in quote, of establishing at the earliest practicable date a general international organization based on the principle of the sovereign equality of all peace-loving states and open to membership by all such states, large and small, for the maintenance of international peace and security, end of quote.
All right, thank you. So, as you can see, they're trying to establish the rules of engagement for this new court they're gonna put together, right? It's gonna call, they're gonna eventually call the ICJ International, uh, uh, Court of Justice, but it used to be called the Permanent Court of International Justice, the PCIJ. But what they're saying is now they're gonna, they're gonna break those same principles into the ICJ. Matter of fact, some of the same judges transferred from the PCIJ to the ICJ. They brought the principles, uh, statutes and stuff from the PCIJ and transferred it over to the ICJ. Right, so they, so the ICJ is now the new rendition of what? The PCIJ of the covenant of the League of Nations. Right? So you have the League of Nations, then now you got the United Nations. Char. You see, this is what they're doing. They're establishing a new world court, a new regime. Okay, let's continue.
This declaration led to exchanges between the four powers at Dumbarton Oaks, resulting in the publication on ninth of October of nineteen forty-four of proposals for the establishment of a general international organization to include an international court of justice. The next step was the convening of a meeting in Washington in April of nineteen forty-five of a committee of jurors representing forty-four states. This committee, under the chairmanship of G. H. Hathworth for the United States, was entrusted with the preparation of a draft statute for the future International Court of Justice for submission to the San Francisco Conference, which during the months of April to June of nineteen forty-four, I'm sorry, nineteen forty-five, was to draw up the United Nations Charter. The draft statute prepared by the committee was based on the statute of the PCIJ and was thus not a completely fresh text. The committee nevertheless declined to take imposition on a number of points which it felt should be decided by the conference. Should a new court be created, question mark? In what form should the court's mission as the principal judicial organ of the United Nations be stated? Should the court's jurisdiction be compulsory, and if so, to what extent? How should the judges be elected? The final decision on these points and on the definitive form of the statute were taken at the San Francisco Conference, in which fifty states participated. That conference decided against compulsory jurisdiction and in favor of the creation of an entirely new court, which would be a principal organ of the United Nations on the same footing as the General Assembly, the Security Council, the Economic and Social Council, the Trusteeship Council, and the Secretariat, and with its statute annexed to and forming part of the Charter. This chief, the chief reasons that led the conference to decide to create a new court were the following. As the court was to be the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, it was considered inappropriate for this role to be fulfilled by the PCIJ, which was linked to the League of Nations, then on the verge of dissolution. The creation of a new court was more logical in light of the fact that several states that were parties to the statute of the PCIJ were not represented at the San Francisco Conference. And conversely, several states represented at the conference were not parties to the statute. There was a feeling in some quarters that the PCIJ formed part of an order, an older order, in which European states had dominated the political and legal affairs of the international community, and that the creation of a new court would make judicial settlement more accessible to non-European states. This has in fact happened as the membership of the United Nations has grown from fifty-one states in nineteen forty-five to a hundred and ninety-three in two thousand and eighteen. Participants at the San Francisco Conference nevertheless emphasized that all continuity with the past should not be broken, particularly since the statute of the PCIJ had itself been drawn up on the basis of past experience, and it was considered better not to change something that in general had worked well. The Charter therefore plainly stated that the statute- The Charter therefore plainly stated that the statute of the ICJ was based upon that of the PCIJ. Moreover, provisions were included in it to ensure that the PCIJ's jurisdiction was transferred as far as possible to the ICJ. The PCIJ met for the last time in October of nineteen forty-five. Then it was decided to take all appropriate measures to ensure the transfer of its archives and effects to the new ICJ, which, like its predecessor, was to have its seat at the Peace Palace. The judges of the PCIJ, still formally in office, all resigned on the thirty-first of January of nineteen forty-six, and the election of the first members of the ICJ took place on the fifth of February of nineteen forty-six at the first session of the United Nations General Assembly and Security Council. In April of nineteen forty-six, the PCIJ was formally dissolved and the ICJ meeting for the first time elected as its President Judge Guero and Last President of the PCIJ and appointed the members of his registry largely from among former officials of the PCIJ. And on eighteenth of April of nineteen forty-six, the new court held its inaugural public sitting.
All right, so that, that's some good background information. So, they got the statutes and rules of the court, right? I had already pointed to those particular instruments. They got the statute, right? I clicked on that relatively quickly. Then I clicked on the rules of the court, right? So, you got three separate chapters. You got the Charter, then you got the statute, and you got the rules, all right? The Moors will learn more about that in the future, right? Okay. All right, so that's a little bit of brief history about the ICJ, right? So, like I said, you, you got the statutes of the International Court of Justice, right? Then you got the, you got the rules, right? The rules were set up. The court adopted the following rules, all right? The Moors will learn more about that in the future, right? Now, what we have to understand is, how did the ICJ and the, the League of Nations come into play? Well, it all started with the Act of Obisers of nineteen oh six. They set up what's called a diplomatic body at Tangier, right? All, all the European states came together and they established a legation in Tangier, right? In, in the Empire Morocco. So, this is where they first started to come together to establish a, a consul court, right? To settle disputes between Europeans and, settle disputes between Morocco and European states and so on, right? So, everything started right here, nineteen oh six. Okay, nineteen oh six is when a lot of this started with regards to who? France. So, from nineteen oh six, once they established this, this treaty, five years later, since they didn't wake up the Moors like they were supposed to wake up the Moors, who ended up with the pen? Because it was supposed to be the Moors, according to the treaty, to, to rule what? Be the sovereign authority over the Empire Morocco along the Sultan. But instead of waking up the Moors, they did what? They brought France in. France ended up doing what? France ended up signing a treaty with the Sultan in nineteen twelve to deal with what? Well, general security, right? See it in green? So, in nineteen twelve, five years after the Act of Obisers signed, the diplomatic body at Tangier decided to go and let France run the show instead of the Moors. You see what's happening? So, right here, it says, uh, no.
The Government of the French Republic and the Government of His Sharifian Majesty desirous of an inaugurating a regular regime of Morocco based upon internal order and general security, which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure the economic development of the country have agreed upon the following.
All right, so, so the Sultan brought in France to help deal with the economic development, but also to deal with what? Deal with the general security, you see that? To set up a military for the Empire Morocco. You see, so then, right, right off the plan, we're going right into Article One. Check out Article One from the top.
Article one. The Government of the French Republic and His Majesty the Sultan have agreed to establish in Morocco a new regime comprising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms, which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory.
So, France, the Sultan gave France the pen, and France was trying to set up a regime comprising what? A new military reform, you see what's happening? So, in green, I got that little military reform and up there, general security. So, so France is responsible for the military, you see? Guess who else France is supposed to wake up to help them with that? Okay, this last paragraph.
This regime shall safeguard the religious status, the respect and traditional prestige of the Sultan, the exercise of the Mohammedan religion, and of all religious institutions, in particular those of the Habbous. It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Mahzin.
So, France was obligated to help what? It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Mahzin. Now, Mahzin what? The Moors' government. France was obligated to wake up the Moors, right? Why was France obligated to wake up the Moors? Now, you gotta go back to the Treaty of Peace in French from nineteen oh six. You gotta go backwards, right? Who, who was obligated to help decolonize, right? And demilitarize, right? The Empire Morocco. It was the Moors' job to do it. It was not the Europeans' job to do it initially. It was the Moors' obligation to help demilitarize the Empire Morocco, right? Okay, so when you go down, okay, immediately, soon, soon as you get into the preamble, just move. Right, get into the preamble. The preamble is about establishing a, a reign of order, okay? So, in the reign of order, you come down and you, and you go into the first, the first chapter. The first chapter sets up the Sultan and the Moors to start to reign in the order. The Moors are supposed to be the police, to police over all other European states throughout the Empire Morocco, right? Okay, from the top.
Chapter one. Declaration relative to the organization of the police. Article one. The conference summoned by His Majesty the Sultan to pronounce on the measures necessary to organize the police declares that the following provisions shall be made. Article two. The police shall be under the sovereign authority of His Majesty the Sultan. It shall be recruited by the Mahzin from Moors Mohammedans, commanded by Moors Cades and distributed in the aid ports open to the commerce.
Oh, so you got the Mohammed, right? So, the Mohammedan, the Moors, the Moors' government. You see that? So, you go back to Treaty Affairs. It was the obligation of, in the Treaty Affairs, Article one. France was due what? It says, "It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Mahzin, a reformed Moors' government." Well, why was the Moors' government so important? Okay, now you gotta come back to the treaty. The Treaty of, 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 of the Act of Obisers, right, of nineteen oh six, that's Article two. But watch what happens when you go to Article thirteen. Watch this. Watch what happens when you go to Article thirteen. I'm, I'm gonna just type in the word. I'm gonna type in the word, uh, war. Now, you jump down to chapter two. Watch what, watch what the Moors are responsible for. Okay, from the top.
Chapter two. Regulations concerning the detection and repression of the contraband of arms. Article thirteen. Throughout the Sharifian Empire, except in the cases specified by Articles fourteen and fifteen, the import, importation and sale is forbidden of arms of war, parts of guns, ammunition of any nature, loaded or unloaded, powder, saltpeter, gun cotton, nitroglycerin, and other compositions destined exclusively for the manufacture of ammunition.
So, it was the Moors' obligation to start to control what's commonly known as weapons of mass destruction for war. So, France was supposed to bring the Moors in to start to demilitarize the Empire Morocco. Right, from the top, Article thirteen. Throughout the Sharifian Empire, which, throughout the Moors' empire, except in cases specified by Articles fourteen and fifteen, the importation and sale is forbidden of arms of war. You see that? Parts of guns, ammunition of any nature, loaded, loaded or unloaded, powder, saltpeter, pepper, saltpeter, gun cotton, nitroglycerin, and all compositions destined exclusively for the manufacture of ammunition. You see? This is nineteen oh six. This is before World War One. Europeans were always constantly fighting. If the Moors was come in and tell them, hey, calm down. Matter of fact, let me get all them weapons of war from y'all. You don't know how to act. It's the Moors' responsibility in nineteen oh six to work with the Sultan to do this. Article one. Article two says the Sultan and the Moors are supposed to do this. Then later on, and now you got nineteen twelve. Now, France got the pen. France is controlling the gamut. Now, to control the empire, to demilitarize. You gotta catch the word I'm using, to demilitarize. Right, this is the mandate of the Act of Obisers to demilitarize. Check it out, okay, watch this. All right, Article fifteen.
Article fifteen. The arms, parts of guns, and ammunition intended for the troops of His Sharifian Majesty will be admitted after the fulfillment of the following formalities. A declaration signed by the Moors Minister of War describing the number and nature of such articles ordered abroad must be presented to the legation of the country of their origin whose visas shall be affixed there too.
So, you're done with the Moors' Minister of War because the Moors are overseeing what? Demilitarization, disarmament, disarming people. Moors are controlling the narrative of war now, you see? Watch this. Okay, continue.
The passage through the customs of the cases and packages containing the arms and munitions delivered at the order of the Moors' government shall be affected upon the presentation.
Pause. So, right here, the passage through the customs of the, of the cases and packages containing the arms and munitions delivered at the order of the Moors' government shall be effective on the presentation. So, what's happening here? Why, why am I reading this? Remember, we were talking about the ICJ? Remember, I was talking about the fact that the United States of America is good at what? Mediation, right? Arbitration, conciliation, right? And then what? Judicial settlement. See, the United States knows that when we go to ICJ, the ICJ gonna say, well, United States of America, you signed this treaty. You said the Moors are in charge of all weapons of war and the Moors are also in charge of all weapons of sport. We're gonna learn about that. This is why the United States gonna stall, deny, defend the Moors as long as they can because they know the Moors are in control of the military complex. We're gonna control all weapons. Then we'll start to demilitarize and disarm them, disarm, disarm people. You'll learn more about that. I'm going through this for a reason because I'm talking about the ICJ. When we get to the ICJ, ICJ gonna learn, these Moors gonna try to demilitarize so we can stop the scourge of war. That was the Moors' responsibility since nineteen oh six. The Sultan brought in the Moors to stop the Europeans from fighting all the time. And since they didn't wake up the Moors, now you got World War One, World War Two, the Cold War. Uh, two bombs dropped, dropped on Japan. Right, you had the bomb, what? Tommy bomb, what? August sixth and August ninth of nineteen forty-five, two bombs dropped on Japan. That might not have never happened if the Moors woke up in nineteen oh six because it was supposed to be the Moors, Moors' government overseeing all weapons of war and sport. And they didn't want the Moors to know about this. We had our permits, you see? Right here, Article sixteen.
Article sixteen. The importation of sporting and high-priced arms, parts of guns, cartridges loaded and unloaded, is likewise forbidden. It may nonetheless be authorized.
Pause. So, Article sixteen. The importation of sporting and high-priced arms, parts of guns, cartridges loaded and unloaded, is likewise forbidden. You see what's happening? The Moors controlled the narrative of arms of what? War and then arms of what? Sport. And what else have arms? High-priced arms. That's your AR-17s, et cetera, high-priced arms. They knew the Moors through a treaty, through a treaty. The most powerful treaty ever written for the Moors' government was the Act of Obisers that controls all other treaties in the Empire Morocco. I'm gonna read it again. Article sixteen. The importation of sporting and high-priced arms, parts of guns, cartridges loaded and unloaded, is likewise forbidden. Then, then they said, well, what? Concessions as to how the weapons can be legal. Where the Moors had to hand out permits. Right, we had to hand out permits to the people, all right? Article seventeen.
Article seventeen. Sporting and high-priced arms and the ammunition for the same will be admitted for the strictly personal requirements of the importer on presentation of a permit issued by the represent, representative of the Mahzin at Tangier. If the importer is a foreigner, this permit will only be granted at the request of his legation.
You see, pause. I'm just, I'm, right now, I'm just jumping around a little bit. I'm trying to show the Moors the power we have in this treaty. We have power and functionality. It's power and function. You see, right here, Article seventeen. Sporting and high-priced arms and the ammunition for the same will be admitted for the strictly personal requirements of the importer on presentation, a permit issued by the representative of the Mahzin at Tangier. What's the Mahzin? Moors' government. The Moors' government gotta hand out permits regarding arms of sport and arms of war. To who? Europeans, the twelve central powers that signed this treaty, you see? You see why they didn't want to wake up the Moors? The Moors had too much power to do what? Disarm the Europeans to stop the what? The scourge of war. But they didn't wake up the Moors. And now, you know, all these Europeans end up being, uh, uh, neutralized because of all these foolish wars that didn't happen on planet Earth since World War One, all these wars. If they'd have woke up the Moors, potentially, those wars wouldn't have happened. Because the Moors have been handing out permits and shut all these European states down and all this, all this arms they've been selling. All they've been doing is ramping up the wars. It's Moors' job to come in and demilitarize, right? I just wanted to give you a couple of quick examples. Okay, so now you go back over Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve. So, since it was under Article one, right? It was the obligation for France to establish a Mahzin to wake up the Moors so the Moors could go back and enforce the Act of Obisers. France didn't do it. But look what else France is responsible for. Watch this. So, now we're getting Article two. Watch this. So, Article one is talking about what? Wake up the Moors and talk about a military reform. Look what Article two says from the top.
Article two. His Majesty the Sultan agrees that henceforth, the French government, subject to prior notification to the Mahzin, may proceed to such military occupation of the Moroccan territory as it may deem necessary for the maintenance of good order and the security of commercial transactions and may exercise every police supervision on land and within the Moroccan waters.
All right. Article two. Look how much power this is and functionality. Article two. His Majesty the Sultan agrees that henceforth, the French government, subject to prior notification to the Mahzin. Who's the Mahzin? Moors' government. See how they tied the Moors back into it again? May proceed to such military occupation of the Moroccan territory, that's Moroccan Empire, as it may deem necessary for the maintenance of good order and security of the commercial transactions and may exercise every police supervision on land and within Moroccan waters. That's the land, air, and sea, you see? So, the Moors' government was supposed to be the police supervision on planet Earth to stop the Europeans from the scourge of war. This is the treaty, Article one and two, right? Which is based on what? The Act of Obisers, right? Going backwards. It was our job to deal with what? That's our job. And our job was to do what? It, it was to give out permits. Because it was the Mahzin, the Moors' government's job to give out permits and dealing with arms. We're supposed to disarm them. They didn't have no permit. That's what? That's a crime. It's a crime. See, now you go down to what? Article twenty-three. I'm, I'm just jumping a little bit. Matter of fact, let, let's go to Article eighteen. I'm gonna read eighteen real quick. Eighteen's a good one, too. From the top.
Article eighteen. The trade in sporting and high-priced arms not rifled of foreign manufacturer, as well as of the ammunition pertaining to the same, shall be regulated as soon as circumstances permit by a Sharifian decision made in. by a Sharifian decision made in conformity with the advice of a majority of the diplomatic body at Tangier. This shall be the case, as well with decisions intended to suspend or restrict the exercise of such trade.
You see? So the control of weapons, right, about the Sharifian decision. Right? This Sharifian decision made in conformity with the advice of the majority of the diplomatic bodies. See that diplomatic body? That was the original, right? United Nations. United Nations is a third rendition. First it started off as the diplomatic body. Then it became what? The League of Nations in nineteen twenty. League of Nations dissolved itself in nineteen forty-six, and the United Nations was established in nineteen forty-five, and really started to commence their full power in nineteen forty-six. So everything started off in the diplomatic body. So don't ever let the, the United Nations and the Security Council ever let you think that they don't know where the United Nations started, their origin. So with that being said, the Security Council, United Nations, know that the Moors' obligation, they know the Moors' obligation to de-militarize the Empire Morocco. This is why nobody wants to wake up the Moors. Nobody talks about the Moors like mom's word. It's taboo to talk about Moors. Why? Why they trying to hide the word Moor on planet Earth? It's because the Moors got these treaties to control arms of war and arms of sport, et cetera. Nobody wants to talk about Moors. Nobody. Moors got these treaties. They don't want the Moors to find out about it, right? Okay, continue reading.
Only such persons as have secured a special and temporary license from the Moorish government shall be allowed to open and operate retail shops for the sale of sporting guns and ammunition.
Read it again.
Only such persons as have secured a special and temporary license from the Moorish government shall be allowed to open and operate retail shops for the sale of sporting guns and ammunition.
See that? You see that? So, so, the United States been arguing with the citizens about what? They wanna come up with gun laws and all that stuff, right? The United States and all the citizens, man, we got Second Amendment rights. Yeah, that might be true according to your constitution, but guess what? Treaties the pre-law of the land. Treaties will control arms. That's why they didn't want the Moors, to know they were Moors, because the Moors can get to control arms, you see? You understand what's happening? I'm gonna read it again. Only such persons as have secured a special and temporary license from the Moorish government shall be allowed to open and operate retail shops for the sale of sporting guns and ammunition. You see that? Right here, secured a special and temporary. Yeah, temporary permit. You see that? Why is it temporary? Because they violated our Moroccan laws, we revoked their permit, you see? Shut them down. This is why they didn't want us to know that we were Moors. Can't understand what's happening here. Okay, so if they get to act it up, right? Now, now you come down here, I'm skipping a lot. Now you come down here, you, you see that right there? See that word right there? Imprisonment. We getting close. We talking about imprisonment. The Europeans don't adhere to our laws. Guess what happens? Guess what happens? Okay. Article twenty-two, then we'll get to twenty-three. Article twenty-two.
Article twenty-two, the fraudulent sale, the receiving and peddling of merchandise prohibited by the present regulations shall be punished according to the penalties specified in Article twenty.
Okay, let's continue.
Article twenty-three, the accomplices in the offense set forth in Articles twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two shall be liable to the same penalties as the principals. The elements determining complicity shall be adjudged according to the laws of the court in charge of the case.
You see, that's Article twenty-three says, we Moors get to control the custom courts to bring suit against the principals, right, for acting what? They're complicit, right, as accomplices, and now they can be held liable, and now they can be adjudged by the court in charge, the Moors' custom court. If they try to do anything with these, these arms of war without a permit, you see? This is why they didn't want the Moors to wake up. You understand what's happening? We're supposed to de-militarize. Listen. Now, you go up to the League of Nations, listen to the covenant on the League of Nations, when they wrote it nineteen twenty. We're gonna read the preamble, then we're gonna jump down to Article eight. Watch this. It's about demilitarization. This was a mandate. This wasn't just an assumption. This was a mandate. And United States of America didn't like it. They, they don't want nobody doing checks and balances on them, but guess what? That day is coming, and it's coming soon. Alright, from the top.
The covenant of the League of Nations, the high contracting parties in order to promote international cooperation and to achieve international peace and security by the acceptance of obligations not to resort to war, by the prescription of open, just, and honorable relations between nations, by the firm establishment of the understandings of international law as the actual rule of conduct amongst governments and by the maintenance of justice, and a scrupulous respect for all treaty obligations in the dealings of organized peoples with one another agreed to this covenant of the League of Nations.
Alright, so, so this right here is about, uh, respecting the rule of law, treaties and international law, and not, right? Not, not, not to resort to war. This is the preamble. It's about security. Trying to de-militarize, right? Why is France setting this up? Because France had an obligation to what? The Treaty Affairs do what? De-militarize and help the Moors to rise up into government. And why did the Treaty Affairs say that? It's because they went back to the Act of Asperus, the Moors were in charge of what? Weapons of war and sport. To de-militarize and hand out permits to stop the scourge of war. You see what's happening? Now let's go down to what? Article eight. Article eight, check this out. Covenant on the League of Nations nineteen twenty. Alright, from the top.
Article eight, the members of the League recognize that the maintenance of peace requires reduction of national armaments to the lowest point consistent with national safety and the enforcement by common action of international obligations. The council, taking account of the geographical situation and circumstances of each state, shall formulate plans for such reduction for the consideration and action of the several governments. Such plans shall be subject to reconsideration and revision at least every ten years. After these plans shall have been adopted by the govern, the several governments, the limits of armaments therein fixed shall not be exceeded without the concurrence of the council. The member of the League agreed that the man, the manufacture by private enterprise of munitions and implements of war is open to grave objections. The council shall advise how the evil effects attendant upon such manufacture can pre, can be prevented. Due regard shall had, uh, due regard being had to the necessities of those members of the League which are not able to manufacture the munitions and implements of war necessary for their safety. The members of the League undertake the intercharge full and frank information as to the scale of their armaments, their military naval and air programs, and the condition of such of their industries as are adaptable to warlike purposes.
So, uh, Article eight, this is about doing checks and balances to look at your inventory of what you have as weapons of mass destruction. Each state had to open their borders to let the other states come in and do an inspection to make sure you only had a limited amount of arms, to make sure you have a stockpile as if you were prepared to go to war. You see what's happening? This was nineteen twenty. This was after World War One, right? After. But before World War One, they already had what? The Treaty Affairs, and before the Treaty Affairs, they had the Act of Asperus. If they would have woke up the Moors in nineteen oh six, potentially World War One would have never established itself. Potentially even the League of Nations wouldn't have been necessary. Because they already had the diplomatic body at Tangier of nineteen oh six. It's supposed to be the Sultan and the Moorish government running the whole empire. But instead, they left France in charge. France immediately started to gather the Moors and went to war. That's why if you go look at old videotapes, you'll see Moors and Fezzes with rifles in their hand, working for France. Because France had control over them because of the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve. The Sultan gave France the rights to control the mobzen of Moors, to go to war with anybody, because everybody know you cannot win a war without a Moor. You understand what's happening here? So Article eight is about de-militarizing, right? It's about such reduction. You see that? About such reduction of arms. That was a mandate of the League of Nations. Okay. Let, let's move on past the League of Nations. Keep in mind, the League of Nations, all its principles, right? The principles such as these articles, they transferred to where? Over to who? The Charter of the United Nations, next, right? So the Charter of the United Nations came up next, right? Right? Which is a spin-off of what? The League of Nations. So even the, the League of Nations court transferred over to the ICJ. The principles founded in the League of, in the, uh, League of Nations transferred over to the United Nations Charter, right? So, so they went from the diplomatic body to the League of Nations, now to the what? Charter of the United Nations, right? But it all started in the diplomatic body at Tangier nineteen oh six for the Sultan and the Moors to be the ones controlling the gamut. You see what's happening? Alright, gotta understand the origin. So now we go to the Charter, we're still talking about the ICJ. So when we go to ICJ and say, hey, what's Moors are trying to de-militarize? The ICJ say, yeah, we can see your treaties had a mandate to do it. Also, the ICJ is saying, yeah, we do know that the League of Nations had a mandate to do it too. We know that France had a mandate to do it through the French protector. So everybody had a mandate to de-militarize, and nobody's done it, but when the Moors rise up, guess what we gonna do?
De-militarize.
Why are we gonna de-militarize? Because it's a treaty obligation. It's a mandate. Treaties ain't a, I think I'm gonna do it. It's an obligation. So when we go to ICJ, they'll say, now we see why you taking everything away from the United States, because they are belligerent. They're a rogue state. And your treaty said to give them permits, and they don't wanna adhere to the permits. So when we start trying to lock them up, and they don't wanna go to jail, we go to ICJ, and I'll, look. Tell you right now. The world's about to go through a shift. When we stop this belligerence as Moors, because we're over one hundred years behind schedule. You know how many people have perished on planet Earth because of the scourge of war, because they never woke up the Moors? And because the Moors were selling each other out? This, this is shameful. A lot of people have perished and been neutralized through wars, the scourge of war, because the Moors wasn't, the Moors are derelict in their duty. So when we step up, and we start to perform our duties and our function with our power, the world's gonna change, either for the better or for the worse. People, these people abide by the treaties or they're not. But they ain't gonna get no easier, because the Moors ain't turning back. Now that we know about these laws and the power we got, it's gotta understand the difference between, uh, rights and power. People got civil rights, but civil rights ain't power. Power is when you got a pen. Not just a pen to be in an act laws, but also to control the courts. But not just a court, it's just a yellow territory for the entire empire. You gotta understand how powerful our pen is, it's Moors. And this is what they was trying to prevent us from understanding. They were trying to supervise the impossibility of performance for the Moors to disarm the Europeans. You see what's happening? But yet they was there and drafted the treaty. They know about the hundred and twenty-three articles in the Act of Asperus in nineteen oh six. They was there when it was being drafted. So they can't act random. They signed it. They consented. They ratified it, right? They deposited. They promulgated. And they gonna have to adhere to the provisions of these treaties and de-militarize. Because we gonna hand out permits, or they gonna go to jail. Listen. Now we're talking about the Charter of the United Nations. What about the Charter of the United Nations? Okay, it also had a mandate to do what? De-militarize, right? They call it disarmament, et cetera. Okay, watch this. Now we go down. Article eleven. Look at what it says. This is obligations of the United Nations, right here in Article eleven. Just pick it up. Okay, let's talk origin. Disarmament started where? The diplomatic body at Tangier nineteen oh six, Act of Asperus, where the Moors controlled the arms. Right? They didn't wake up the Moors. Now they established the Treaty Affairs nineteen twelve. They tell France, France, you gotta wake up the Moors, and still go de-militarize. Then after that, France established the League of Nations, and the League of Nations talking about in their preamble and Article eight, obligation to de-militarize. Then they shut down the League of Nations. They established the United Nations nineteen forty-five, and guess what the United Nations talks about? De-militarization. Article eleven, let's read it.
Article eleven, one, the General Assembly may consider the general principles of cooperation in the maintenance of international peace and security, including the principles governing the disarmament and the regulation of armaments, and make, and may make recommendations with regard to such principles to the members or to the Security Council or to both.
Okay, so the Security Council responsible, right, for the gu, governing over disarmament, right, or regulations of armament, but timeout. That's supposed to be whose job to do that? The Moors. The Moorish government. Not the Security Council, who's a spin-off of the League of Nations. They didn't wake up the Moors. It was the Moors' job to maintain security in the Empire Morocco and abroad. But now all of a sudden, our Security Council? The Security Council doing that? I don't think so. They not doing a good job, but what's my point? The, the principles of the Act of Asperus has transferred from, from the diplomatic body of the Act of Asperus to who? The League of Nations. From the League of Nations over to United Nations Charter. You see what's happening? But in between all that, you have the Treaty Affairs that gave France the pen to grant for the League of Nations to even be established. Then France had to give a grant for the United Nations to be established. Because France is responsible for all courts. Right? That's Article one of the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve. They responsible for courts in the Empire Morocco. Alright, now watch this. Article twenty-six. I'll re, I'll listen.
Article twenty-six, in order to promote the establishment and maintenance of international peace and security with the least diversion for armaments of the world's human and economic resources, the Security Council shall be responsible for formulating with the assistance of the Military Staff Committee referred to in Article forty-seven, plans to be submitted to the members of the United Nations for the establishment of a system for the regulation of armaments.
Who's supposed to be regulating armaments? Our, Moorish government's supposed to be regulating armaments, armaments, I should say. Right? It's Christmas time, so I'm thinking. That was the obligations of the treaty of the Act of Asperus of nineteen oh six. It said the Moorish, the Moorish government of war. The Moorish Minister of War was supposed to be assisting with handing out permits dealing with arms of war. But since they didn't wake up the Moors, France took over. Then France then turned around, established the League of Nations. League of Nations turned into the United Nations, and now the Security Council is overseeing armaments and taking care of what? Regulations. Why? In the absence of the Moorish government. You see? The Moors have been absent, derelict in their duties. Same time, the colonists didn't wanna wake them up. We're talking disarmament. Listen. Article forty-seven, I'm listening.
Article forty-seven, one, there shall be established a Military Staff Committee to advise and assist the Security Council on all questions relating to the Security Council's military requirements for the maintenance and international peace and security, the employment and command of forces placed at its disposal, the regulation of armaments, and possible disarmament.
Uh-huh, see? United Nations, Security Council, acting like Moors, you see? Alright, so I just wanted to shed a little bit about armaments, right? Armaments and possible disarmament. United Nations responsible for that. The Security Council. What's the problem with Security Council? All them colonists, they keep up the most mayhem on planet Earth. They not trying to de-militarize, you see? But it was the Moors' obligation to make sure they de-militarize. That's why they don't wanna wake up the Moors, you see? Listen, this is United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. You see? United Nations member states, they know the only way to stop the scourge of war on planet Earth is to wake up the Moors. I E. the indigenous people. So in two thousand seven, they passed this. Right? Barack Obama signed it in twenty-ten, but he signed it for who? The United States. But the Moors themselves needed to become members to the United Nations, not members, but recognize the Charter. Right? You follow our constitution? Right, depose our constitutions, that way we could turn around and accede, right? So we could enforce the rights indigenous people, because our state became a contracting party to the rights indigenous people. Taj Gibson kept saying what Obama did, my question is, what did the Moors do to become parties to the United Nations? Rights of Indigenous People? Don't tell me about what Barack Obama did, what did the Moors do to become a signatory power to the rights indigenous people? See Taj didn't wanna tell the Moors that we could became parties to it back in two thousand seven. But we were stateless people. Run around here talking about enforce the Constitution, that's a colonist constitution for Americans, we are Moroccans. And Moroccans could've became parties to this United Nations instrument. Coming known as the Treaty for the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, I E. Moors, and look what they put in there, listen. We're going out to the word. Military. Matter of fact. We'll go to the preamble, this is the preamble. We're gonna start right here at the preamble, listen to what they're saying in the preamble, from the top.
Convinced that control by indigenous people over developments affecting them and their lands, territories. And resources will enable them to maintain and strengthen their institutions, cultures. And traditions, and to promote their development in accordance with their aspirations and needs. Recognizing that respect for indigenous knowledge, cultures, and traditional practices. Contributes to sustainable and equitable development and proper management of the environment. Emphasizing the contribution of the demilitarization of the lands and territories. Of indigenous peoples to peace, economic, and social progress and development. Understanding and friendly relations among nations and peoples of the world.
Pause, so you see, I'm gonna take it from the top, li- listen to what it's, this thing, you gotta catch what's happening. They know only the Moors can demilitarize. They call them indigenous people, they know the Moors have these treaties. United Nations members, they know Moors have the power of the Act of the Sarahs, they know. France knows it, everybody knows it, China knows it, Russia knows it, United States America knows it, Great Britain knows it, everybody knows. The Moors have the power to demilitarize to stop the scourge of war, so they put it right here in the preamble on the rights of indigenous people. But they know the indigenous people don't have a power to demilitarize unless they already had what in their hand? Treaties. Treaties the supreme law of land. So look what they did in two thousand seven, convinced that the control. By indigenous people over developments affecting them and their lands. Territories and resources will enable them to maintain and strengthen their institutions, read again. Convinced that the control, you see that? That's a powerful word. Convinced that the control by indigenous people. They know indigenous people can control the narrative with their pen through their governments. And demilitarize the land, especially Moors who got treaties, especially the Act of the Sarahs. That's the most powerful treaty ever written on behalf of the Moors government in the Empire Morocco. So from the top, convinced that the control by indigenous people, who's the indigenous people, Moors, so let's read it properly. Convinced that the control by Moors governments over developments affecting them and their lands, territories, and resources. Will enable the Moors government to maintain and strengthen their institutions, cultures, and traditions. And to promote their development in accordance with their aspirations and needs, I need to do what? Demilitarize. Listen, this is recognizing that the respect for Moors government's knowledge, culture, and traditional practices. Con- contributes to sustainable and equitable development and proper management of the environment, that's proper management. Well, up here it said what? Control. Then you come down here, it says what? Proper management. See what's happening? Gotta catch these words. Now, now, check this out. Emphasizing the contribution of the demilitarization. Of the lands and territories of Moors, territories of Moroccan Empire. Establishes what? It put peoples to peace, establishes peace when you demilitarize, you gotta see what they're writing. When you demilitarize the lands, now you can finally start to establish peace, but who's the peoples? That can bring the peace, only the what? Indigenous Moore, they know this. So from the top, right here, emphasizing the contribution of the demilitarization of the lands. And territories of indigenous people, Moroccans. To peace, economic, and social, listen. Social. Progress and development, understanding and friendly relations among nations and peoples of the world. So the world can be saved. If we demilitarize. But wait a minute, they start talking about military again, listen. Article thirty, look, look what they say about the Moors, okay, from the top.
Article thirty, one. Military activity shall not take place in the lands or territories of indigenous peoples. Unless justified by a relevant public interest or otherwise freely agreed with. Or requested by the indigenous peoples concerned. Two, states shall undertake effective consultations with the indigenous peoples concerned. Through appropriate procedures and in particular through their representative institutions. Prior to using their lands or territories for military activities.
You see, article thirty. From the top, military activity shall not take place in the lands or territories of the Moors peoples, you see that? Read again, article thirty. Military activity shall not take place in the lands or territories of Moors people, you gotta remember, the United Nations wrote these. So there are, this is, this right here what you call, United Nations Resolution, which becomes what? Customary norm, international law. So the Moors can use this when we go to the ICJ. And say, we told the United States of America to shut down the military bases, and that they needed permits. And they wasn't listening to us, so now we gotta come in here and enforce article thirty. Right, of the rights indigenous people, it says, military activity shall not take place in the lands or territories of Moors people. Unless justified by a relevant public interest or otherwise freely agreed. With or requested by the Moors peoples concerned, so therefore, the Moors can hand out what? Permits. If we wanna allow them to establish any type of military bases or have arms of war or arms of sport, we can hand out permits. Because that's what the Act of the Sarahs said, it said hand out temporary permits, you see? Section two, states shall undertake effective consultation. With the Moors people concerned through appropriate procedures, and in particular through their respective institutions. Prior to using their lands or territories for military activities, this is the international law. It says, only these Moors can stop this scourge of war, only the Moors can do it. And the Moors gonna start waking up everywhere, all throughout Europe, it's just a matter of time when they find out about the Act of the Sarahs. Alright, so, so you gotta understand, Moors. Uh, not only do our treaties have a mandate. For the Moors to demilitarize. But also the League of Nations talked about it. France had obligation through the Treaty Affairs. United Nations Charter talks about disarmament. And then, the rights indigenous people comes out in two thousand seven, still begging. For these Moors to wake up and enforce their treaty rights and their treaty powers. And this is why I'm trying to get the Moors to wake up, realize we're not Moors Americans, as long as we keep saying we're Moors Americans. The scourge of war will continue on planet Earth, especially right here locally, with these police and sheriffs, et cetera. We gotta wake up as a people. To understand, not only do we have a power of custom court, but we also have a power of what? We got the power of the International Court of Justice to back us up. That must be understood. I get that. Islam.
Islam.